This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our meeting. First, I would like to ask the board members if there is any conflict of interest or any disclosure that they would like to put forward before we start the meeting in compliance with our open meetings law.
Trustee Lanfear, I do not.
Trustee Stetser, I do not.
Trustee Leikab, I do not.
Mayor Plummer, I do not. Just a note for everybody, trustee Keating will be joining us in a little bit. I think around 7:00 PM, he just let us know his daughter has a volleyball final, so he's coming a little bit late. I also wanted to let anybody know from the public in attendance, any of our village residents are more than welcome, and we encourage you to pick up free native trees, their seedlings, that are right on the front porch of Village Hall. This is in honor of Arbor Day, and there's five different types of trees. There's a sugar maple, a sweet gum, a flowering dogwood, a red bud, and a balsam fir. So please come and help yourself, and there's also information sheets that you can pick up. They're available right there on the porch for you to give you more information about the tree and how to plant it. So with that, we'll begin.
Can we have a motion to open the meeting?
Oh, you're right, you're right. I forgot the motion. See, I'm still getting up to speed here, everybody. Is there a motion? I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
That's our second. Rocco, trustee Stetser.
That's our eye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Leikab.
Leikab, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I. Thank you. Also, since we do have two public hearings tonight, I'm asking our village clerk just to remind us of our guidelines for public comment before we start in here.
Okay, so the public may speak only during the public comment period of the meeting or at such other time as the majority of the board allows. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officers. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information. All remarks must be addressed to the board as a body, not to any member thereof. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications. That leads me to our little chat box. If you leave a chat message in there or a question for the board, please put it in there, and I'll be happy to read it or call on you to reach the board if they recognize you. And as always, you can email me at villageclerk@villageofpittsburgh.com, and I'll be happy to read those comments as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that, Dorothea. The village attorney will be joining us in a little bit. He actually did not have a report for us tonight. So we'll proceed then with the treasurer's report.
Hi, all right. I have an adjustment to the vouchers to start with. Voucher number 578 is being deleted out of the run for the abstract because it is duplicated within the abstract. I didn't happen to catch it. So the total vouchers will be $42,000, 004.53. That said, um... There is vouchers for 572 is for the comptroller class that both Brooklyn and Marina had taken for the accounting classes, both basic and advanced. 578 deleted. There are 579 is for the arboretum. 581 is for the arboretum. There's two of them. Other than that, we've paid attorney Osborne's office for some of the invoices that are still outstanding, that are there but still outstanding with a few others. So other than that, nothing really to report on anything exceptional in the vouchers, and I need a motion to approve $42,000, 004.53 off the general pond only.
So moved, is there a second?
Lanfear, second.
Rocco, trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Leikab.
Leikab, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I did have attorney bills that are still outstanding that I was looking for payment for, but trustee Keating is not here to address any of those, so they'll have to wait until later in the meeting. That's it for me for right now.
Okay, remind us that we need to circle back to that later on, please.
Will do.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, Dorothea?
Oh, yep. We have our bond payment. This is our annual payment. It is due on May 15th. We wanted to get authorization to go ahead and pay the bond payment and the interest that is due. This is showing $50,000 for the payment, and I believe the interest, I'm sorry... I believe it's around $2,300. Does that sound right, Mary?
It sounds about correct. I don't have the exact number with me either.
Okay, I just need authorization to make these payments, so we're in compliance.
And this is the bond that we have, we're six years in on a 10-year bond, is this the one?
Yes, it is.
That is correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just so everybody knows, is there any comment from the board? Or a motion? I make a motion that we approve the bond payment for $50,000 with interest. Is there a second?
Trustee, second.
Stetser, oh my gosh, trustee Stetser, second.
You're both trustees. Okay, trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Leikab.
Leikab, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, well, you have minutes down here, but you just said we don't have any minutes. Am I correct?
No, I'm sorry, there is standard on the agenda, and we didn't have them ready to go.
No problem.
We'll have more for you at a later date.
Okay, no problem at all. Then why don't we head into our meeting items? And the first item is the non-municipal permit for the Pittsburgh Central School senior parade.
Correct. I don't believe anybody is here from the school, so I'll represent them. This is the parade they did last year in response to the pandemic. It was very popular if any of the trustees had attended. I happened to have been here that day. It was a very exciting and wonderful event for the kids to help celebrate their graduation, and they're looking to do the same thing again this year.
So they've just changed the route, correct? So that means do we have to approve it contingent upon the town approving it since part of it is in the town jurisdiction? Or do we just take care of our part of it?
I would say we just handle our concern.
Okay, perfect. Okay, yeah, I attended the parade last year, and it was great. You know, it was just heartwarming, you know, to see all the cars decorated and the kids. So I'm excited they're doing it again this year. Any other thoughts from the board or comments? Okay, is there's a place a motion to approve a non-municipal permit for the Pittsburgh Central School senior parade to be held on June 5th? Is there a second?
I have a clarification, please. Trustee Lanfear, are we within the 45-day? I'm not very good at counting on my fingers.
I'm looking, and I can't count either tonight, so I'm just going to ask the board and wave that along. I think we're close on the mark, so probably be safer just to wave it.
Okay, we respectfully ask to have that added to the motion that Mayor Plummer has made.
The motion's been amended, is there further discussion? Is there a second?
Lanfear, second.
Gotcha. Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Leikab.
Leikab, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, I don't know if our attorney is here yet. He's supposed to, oh, 6:40, well, a few minutes, because I know he wanted to be here for the special permit application. Well, we can at least start into it, I guess. How's that? This is the special permit application for neutral grounds, a coffee house to go in on Shane Place, at 45 Shane Place on the upper level. And for those of you in attendance, it was, I believe, it was formerly a Tom Walls years ago. So that's the building we're talking about. And... Is the applicant here? Oh, there you are.
Hi, how are you? I'm Mayor Plummer, it's nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you as well, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to give us a little background and tell us about what you're doing?
Sure, absolutely. I had originally applied for a permit to open the coffee shop in with Dolce cupcakery, but it turned out that the space wasn't going to be big enough for both of us. So I decided to talk with the landowner, the building owner, and open the coffee shop up at 45 Show and Place. That building has been vacant for quite some time. It's a great location. And so my plan is to, on the left side of the building, put in a venue space, and I'm going to work with Steve on capacity, but I'm hoping it's between 50 and 60 for bridal and baby showers and that sort of thing. And then on the right side of the building is going to be a coffee house. The name is Neutral Ground Coffee House. I did provide you guys with a mood board, just to give you an idea of what I was planning, what my plans are for in there. And, you know, we plan on, the building's going to be painted, and, you know, it'll have like light lunches. My hours are going to be approximately seven to three. And on the weekends, extend it a little bit longer because I will be serving ice cream, which everybody that walks by is really excited about. So that's sort of what the plan is. And I did supply the floor plan, the tentative floor plan, it's not complete, and also a mood board, letters of support, and just a little brief summary of my business plan.
Yeah, I saw a lot of letters of support.
Yeah, the local businesses are very excited about it. I did take the time and go meet with everybody. I'm already, if everything goes, looking to partner with Dolce to do baking for me. Olives and Label 7 are going to be my caterers, preferred caterers. And also, the Hobby House wants to hold some needlepoint classes there during the day. So everybody was very, very receptive and excited that something was happening in that building, and they really liked the business plan, that it wasn't another restaurant or nightclub or anything like that. They were very supportive, and I'm grateful.
Okay, Steve, did you have any comments on it at this point? You're working with the applicant?
No, I'm not Mary Ann Rock, I'm not Mary Ann a long time ago, but no, I'm excited. That building's been sitting vacant for a long time, and any vacant building is, to me, is a bad thing for any municipality. So I'm excited for.
Okay. Oh, Jeff, hi, I see you joined us. We're just talking about the application for a special permit for neutral grounds, and I didn't know if you had any comment on that or anything you'd like to weigh in on?
I do not, unless there's a specific issue that you want me to address.
No, I mean, I think it sounds wonderful. I'm excited about it. I think it's a great location for it, too. You know, very visible also on the canal. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I have one.
Yes, Lily, yes.
Thank you. Hi, Mary Ann. I'm almost glad it was too small for you, but now you're getting an even better space and situation. It sounds exciting. The, your food delivery, will that be coming in panel trucks or will that be coming in a larger? Do you know at this point?
No, I don't. I, you know, it's going to be a very, it's going to be a very light menu. I would imagine that, like, I see there's some big trucks down there, US Foods and Palmer's and stuff like that to the other restaurants. Mine won't be anything like that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so I don't expect huge trucks because it's going to be very simple and just lunch only. So I think that's going to make a big difference.
Super. And have you made arrangements for your trash disposal? And which, will you be using dumpsters or totes?
I will be using dumpsters. I'm going to ask the landlord if I can get a tote so that I can wheel it over, but it's all included in my cams. The dumpsters are way in the back, and so that's where all my trash will go.
Okay, super. Thank you. And you know that you've been through this process already, so now you're an expert, and you know that we'll be talking to you again during the public hearing portion when that is scheduled.
Okay.
Great to see you again.
Thank you, I'm excited about this. I'm just so excited that the other business owners are all looking to partner up, and even Copperleaf, you know, we talked and have some ideas as well. So the businesses down there are very excited.
Thank you.
Brings good energy, definitely. Yeah, any other questions from the board or thoughts? Yeah, Justin?
Hi, welcome, Mary Ann. I just had a question perhaps for Steve about other permits that would be required. Is there a site plan permit and any variances and any HPP approval that's necessary on this one?
No, there shouldn't be. I mean, there's no site plan because they're not changing any exterior portion of the building. There's nothing changed other than painting on the exterior of the building, so that would not require HPP. And zoning, it isn't allowed function within there, but purely under a special permit by the trustees.
Great, yes, Jeff. Jeff?
Oh, Steve, if there's going to be signage, that will require HPP approval, won't it? Correct, yeah. So if she wants to sign it, that will have to be submitted to the HPP for approval.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Should we look to set a date for a public hearing?
Mayor Plummer, before you go forth, we do have a comment from the chat.
Oh, sure, yes.
Okay, Art here from the chat has a question. Neutral ground parking counts for Northfield Commons versus total of all tenants inside seating only, concerns with location of existing dumpsters and ongoing concern of contiguous residents.
Yes, if possible, I can embellish it or just wait to hear responses. This is Art, can you hear me?
Oh, hi, Art. Yeah, yeah, why don't you just chime in here? Because you live adjacent to this site, so...
Well, pretty darned close to it. There's other residents that are closer, but I'm back up to, or Northfield Commons backs up to the residence along State Street, one of which is mine. I'm at the tail end at the east. So in general, the big question is just here again, the ongoing thing and the big picture, and we'll talk about this during the resolution for outdoor seating for restaurants, too. But the big picture is, the Northfield Commons, I don't know and question if all the code violations have been remedied, number one. Are the parking counts for the entire Northfield Commons taken into account? I'm certainly in support of the coffee shop and utilize of that building, but it's just a big picture question that for months, years, it's still outstanding. What are the total parking counts permissible within Northfield Commons, number one? Number two, what is the total count for all the tenants? Number three, the dumpsters is a huge issue. Why the dumpsters are located at the far eastern end of Northfield Commons, adjacent to, contiguous to the rear of a residential lot that we hear multiple days during the week, morning and noon, and sometimes night. And I was told, and I think if you go back in the records, at least one of the board members said that they would be approaching Northfield Commons owner and trying to remedy that situation. I have no idea why those dumpsters are there. Number two, why those dumpsters are not behind the lumberyard, the lumber mill building? There's a huge area of green space. In fact, they have their own little dumpster, somebody has a little dumpster there. These are ongoing questions and concerns, and I really, as myself and I think other residents, and I think John might want to speak to that, too, unless I've misspoken, other residents' part. When this will be addressed, and I think now's the time to do it. So a lot of questions there, feel free to go down the list as you see deemed to choose. Thank you.
Could any, oh, yeah, before I speak, yes, John, sure, hi.
Good evening, this is John Limbeck from 62 State Street, and I live four houses closer to this than Art does, and I would echo every sentiment that he just relayed, and I'll have more to say during the outside seating. But it's nothing against this particular business or this new owner. It's just that we've had a very difficult property owner sitting behind us. And again, I think he just gives a lot of lip service to the village, and we, as the adjacent neighbors who all have made very significant investments in our property, have to live with what we've got behind us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. You know, I just want to follow up quickly because Art had mentioned that there was a discussion already about the location of the dumpster with the prior board, I think. Does anybody have any information about that that they could share? Whoever was looking into that or the status of that?
May I speak about that?
Well, hang on, hang on one second, hang on. Who had their hand up? Oh, Lily, Lily, yes.
I did. Yes, unfortunately, without going back in the records, I cannot remember specifically which board member said they were going to look into it, but I know that for a fact that that was true, as a matter of fact, several times. And I believe the building inspector also was going to make an attempt to reach out to the property owner for moving the dumpsters, which had been, quite honestly, an ongoing problem for the residents of State Street. And we haven't had a satisfactory response from the owner of the property. It doesn't seem like it would be that onerous to move the dumpsters to a more advantageous place for the nearby residents. I wish I could specify which trustees looked into it, but I know it was a matter of concern for the entire board, so...
Okay, thanks just for bringing it up. Yes, Steve, yes.
Yeah, this is Steve, the building inspector. Just for information's sake, nobody has ever mentioned to me about moving the dumpsters. The only thing that's ever been said to me in regards to those dumpsters is when they were picking them up early and I contacted the vendor to make sure they were after certain hours or before certain hours. But there's never, because I would talk to Charlie. I mean, Charlie's done some of those things I've asked on other properties, but that's never come up. So if that's a wish of this board and residents, I'm more than willing to talk to Charlie about trying to get that dumpster and closure moved. But that's never been on my radar.
And I'm happy to help with that as well, facilitating any way that I can to follow up. And I'm sorry that there hasn't been a follow-up. John had his hand up, John Limbeck is recognized.
This is probably before Steve's time, and I'd like to comment, aside from that, that Steve has been very responsive when we've called, and he has gotten back to myself, and I'm thinking Art as well, because his dealings with the garbage company, they have GPS, so they know when their guys are there, and if they're early, they can track it. But during the discussions, and again, this was before Steve's time, we spent an awful lot of time with trustee Keating, who was working with us, and the night that the board voted on this, he kind of reversed course and said he was confident that the neighbors could work it out with the property owner, which kind of just put the whole thing backwards. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
And Mayor, Ms. Mayor, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, sorry, hi, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't have a little thing I can wave up here, sorry. So I hate to interrupt. But yeah, to John's point, and I did send something to Dorothea just beforehand. It was my recall with Dan Keating, too, because we had raised this whole issue again in earlier conversations many months ago. And I believe Mr. Keating had, actually trustee Keating actually said that he would, you know, work with the property owners to see, get that moved. But beyond seeing if he could move it, here again, if, I don't understand why it's there in the first place. Number two, there's ongoing, I don't, and I also applaud Steve for his working with us whenever he called. It was not him expressing concern about not following up on, he certainly did with the dumpsters, as John had made mention. It's more of a matter of are there code violations out there? They have been in the past, not complied with, number one, not remedied. Number two is, here again, I think, from my understanding, it's in the proper role and responsibilities and rights of the village to insist on a property owner becoming compliant with all code regulations, all conditions of approvals prior to granting any other approvals. And months come and go, applications come and go. The businesses, and all due respect to them, they get what, most of the time, what they seek, which is good in many of the cases, such as the one today that is on there with neutral ground. But the residents, it comes and goes, and the residents are stuck with the same dilemmas. So the quality of life is once again negatively impacted by issues never resolved.
Thank you, Art, thank you for bringing us up to speed. Dorothea, are there any other comments coming in?
Yes, Justin.
Okay, Justin, yes, sorry.
Just to give a little background about the dumpsters, you know, I'm on the planning board, and when this came before us approximately five years ago, I looked into the issue. And before my time on the planning board, approximately seven years ago, the location of the dumpster was approved as a site plan by the planning board. And under the code at the time, the code prohibited dumpsters within a certain distance of residential properties, but it allowed an exemption if the planning board approved it. So the planning board, once upon a time, approved that location. When we looked at the site plans of this, we are well aware, Art has been very vocal about this particular issue, and this is a existing approved authorized location and use, and there was nothing that we could do about it unless asking someone to voluntarily move something. So...
Can I ask a question on that?
It didn't look like there was much we could do because it was approved.
Justin, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
One second, I have the floor, please. Justin, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Justin Leepstra, 19 Mountain Avenue. I have just another comment on that regard pursuant to this. When the planning board approved their site plan, they never finished it. There is conditions of approval put on there. There is a scheduled, a tiered installation plan for lighting and correcting a violation at the pond that was filled in and not functioning, and those are never finished.
Okay, that's something that we could probably address as well offline because I think what we're seeing now, that we need some action items going forward. Art, you had one more comment? I'm sorry I cut you off before. Art, you had one more comment, I'm sorry I cut you off before. Art? No? Yes? Art, if you have a comment, please go ahead.
Yes, I don't know how per, thanks for the Justin's comment. I don't know how per any municipal code, a planning board has the right to grant a variance from code regulations. That's just a question I'll throw out there.
Uh, why don't I throw this, Jeff, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. Is there anything you'd like to comment on, or would you, would you need time to review what has happened prior?
Well, the planning board cannot grant a variance, but I don't know if the planning board, as you know, the, the same members said it's two boards. It's possible that they granted a variance, or it's possible that the code at that time, as Justin suggests, allowed the planning board to vary the requirement, in which case it would be legal.
Okay, so I think we have some action items here. One is, Steve, we need to take a look at some of the ongoing code violations um, that were brought up. I think we also need to revisit what the prior uh, planning board did precisely. And I also think, and I'll be part of this, we need to reach out with the property, to the property owner, and you know, try to see how we can move this forward, so it's a positive outcome for our residents too. Are there any other thoughts or comments from the board? Nope. Uh, well, with that in mind, I mean, you know, I, this is, we're at a point where normally we would set a date for, yes, Steve?
Renee had her hand, Renee had her hand up.
Renee, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, I was just, I can see Mary Ann um, down on my screen here. And is there any way that you could explain how this will impact her um, application here and, and?
Well, I would not like, we would not like it to impact your application. Um, what we're trying to do is clear up, you know, clearly ongoing concerns from residents uh, relative to the property owner. Um, and your, your application involves this person's property. So Jeff, you know, I'm going to ask you in terms of, could we still set a date for the public hearing and really try to work on this as we move forward?
Absolutely, and.
I mean, I, I would like to not penalize the applicant for this.
No, 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 we can, we can certainly set the public hearing, and we don't know yet where we are with this. I mean, whether or not there are code. This is out of conformity with the code, out of conformity with the site plan. Um, I think, I'm not sure that they're different, they could be, in terms of whether or not it would be an impediment to this application, but there's no reason you can't set the public hearing pending working on this and finding out what the exact status is of any code violations versus any site plan violations.
Gotcha. Okay, Steve, you had your hand up, did you want to add something?
I just want to say, I'm more, I'm more than happy to pull out the approved site plan and then, and then sit down with it, figure out where the site is, and then, then try and, and get Charlie to start working on some of the items. He's not going to do everything at once, but like you said, other items that I have brought to his attention, he has taken care of. So I think, you know, with a little prodding and the right, and the right information, we can get him to comply with what needs to be done down there. But there are technically no code violations in my system right now for that location.
Okay, yes, John, I see your hand, yeah.
Um, there, there may not be any code violations right now, but for the last two summers, I've had the Monroe County sheriffs at my house three times because that property owner parks his landscaping trucks down in Northfield Commons, and he uses the sidewalk on my side of the street to travel up and down to do the properties on State Street that he maintains. He's got mowers that are traveling 20 to 30 miles an hour. Last summer, he had a, a mower type vehicle that had a fertilizer on the front, and it was dripping fertilizer, the whole liquid fertilizer on the sidewalks. The sheriffs have gone down and talked to him, told him to cease and desist, and Charlie's people just figure that it's more convenient to do that than it is to park a truck on the street or to pull a truck in the driveway. This is the caliber of individual that you're dealing with. He just doesn't care. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yes, Mary Ann, yes.
I just wanted to let you guys know that Charlie does not have Blackwood landscaping or anymore. He, he's not in the landscaping business anymore, so hopefully that's a non-issue now.
Thank you for that.
My point was that he just didn't care when it was brought to his attention. And if you saw the number of people that walk on State Street having those mowers zipping up and down the sidewalk, it was dangerous.
I mean, clearly, clearly there's concerns that need to be addressed. I think, you know, and I appreciate everybody, you know, for weighing in on this and, and also bringing me up to speed as well as some of the other trustees. Um, but we have our action items to move forward. I still think, um, I would like to um, set a date for the public hearing, and.
May 25th. It would be May 25th at 7 o'clock.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to set the hearing date for uh, May 25th for neutral ground coffee shops. What is, I don't know what else I need to say. All right.
7 p.m.
Is there a second?
Like a second.
Okay, roll call, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, I.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, bye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, well, thank, yeah, thank you, Mary Ann. We're, we're moving forward, and we're going to try to address some of these issues for our residents, because I'm concerned as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Okay, um, the expansion of outdoor seating, the resolution? Sorry, I'm trying to find it here. Dorothea?
Yep.
Do we need a resolution or?
No, we don't have to read the whole resolution. This is a resolution that was introduced last year during the pandemic to assist restaurants and other retail, other type establishments. And I, the board expanded this again through April last year to get them through the winter, since we had such a wonderful winter. And it's coming up now to expiring, and Steve reminded me about this and spoken to you, and it was requested to be on the agenda, so we're looking to expand it again. And how long would be a board decision?
Yeah. Go ahead. Yes, I'm sorry, Steve, yes. Who, who wanted to speak, Steve?
No, Lily.
Oh, Lily, I'm sorry, your, your hand was up, yep.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yes, I would just like a clarification of, of um, the term that was used in this uh, to describe the resolution. Are we talking about an extension of the existing resolution?
Yes.
It's not an expansion?
Extension.
It's an extension.
Yeah.
Thank you, I would like to make that clarification for the record.
Okay, do, um, we have to come up with a date to extend it to. Are there any thoughts or comments from the board on that? Or Steve, Steve, I see, yes, oh, Lily's got her hand up again.
Me, I'm so quick.
You are.
Yes, um, I would like to clarify that those businesses which have, currently have a special use permit are the businesses with, to which we are referring. Is that, is that correct? I just wanted to clarify that as well. Businesses that currently hold a special use permit are businesses to which this um, resolution will apply.
So let's, let's, let's talk about that. Um, so we just had um, a discussion about granting a special use permit to a coffee house. So would they not fall under the purview then of this extension? If they were granted the special use permit? I bring that back to the board.
I think that's what I'm, I'm saying is, they must have a special use permit. If they are operating without a special use permit, then I don't, do not believe that the building inspector would be, have the jurisdiction to uh, expand into outside seating. In other words, if it was not originally granted.
Right, so I just want to, I do follow it, but I just want to make sure that it's not covering what's, what's currently existing as a special use for a business, that it can be.
Correct.
Any other business in the interim that has granted a special use permit as well.
Yes, yes.
I want to understand, yeah. Steve, want to weigh in, weigh in on this?
Um, no, I, I think that would cover anybody wishes to, to use the outdoor seating. Rachel's has a special use permit. Um, they were one that, that was big on it. Um, now Thirsty's did it before. The Lounge did a little spot behind before, now is a tequila-ria. Um, and then where obviously the Pavilion now takes up where we did the, that outside seating. Um, so I, I think that would pretty much cover, as far as I know, the people that would wish to utilize this um, rule. Jeff?
Yes, Jeff?
As the rule, as the resolution is currently in existence, it applies to all restaurant and tavern uses as they are defined in the code. So for instance, Thirsty's does not have a special use permit, but I would, I would view it as applying to Thirsty's as well. So it, what I'm trying to say is the resolution is not specific to special permit uses, it's specific to restaurant and tavern uses.
Yeah, because Thirsty's, Thirsty's put a ton up in the parking lot last year behind Hungry's and utilized that based during the pandemic in order to survive.
And Steve, correct me, didn't they do that with your uh, outside seating permit issued by you?
Yes.
So in other words, they're covered either way, right? Am I correct, they're covered by this particular resolution?
The way they're covered by this resolution, yes.
Right, okay.
And we, just, just kind of a note, we had no issues at all with this resolution as here, no, no negative impact or no, no negative comments from anybody, residents or business. Everybody really appreciated the fact that the village did this to help all the local businesses.
It seemed to be quite successful. Yes, Lily, you had your hand up?
I, I, I did, because I know, um, Jeff, that farther on in the resolution, it does state, and I'm sorry, I, I can't pull it up quickly on my computer, as other people can, I can't do two things at once. I do, I do believe it does state that one of the, of the requirements in order for Steve to be able to grant a relief is that the uh, property have a special use permit. So I understand about Thirsty's, because that's been grandfathered and a special case for a very long time, and I understand the necessity because of, of COVID. I just want to be consistent in, in what we're proposing as a resolution. I want to be careful with what we have. There's that, Justin, he's right on it with a computer. He pulled it up, didn't you, Justin? It should be there, where it does state in the resolution that was in our packet, that a special use permit is one of the requirements. So we might have to, we might have to make an exception for Thirsty's or in some way accommodate that, is what I'm trying to say, rather than unofficially make an exception for Thirsty's, if that makes sense, because they don't have a special use permit.
That's in section, well, you're correct, Lily, that's in section one. So.
Okay.
Okay, so if there, there must be some way to accommodate. Because I can think of a couple of other businesses, or at least one other business, that does not have a special use permit. Because they were granted under a, a, a different, a different part of the code by the planning board, and it didn't, it did not fall under the jurisdiction of the trustees, and therefore did not receive a special use permit. So, and then as, as part of their um, approval, were not granted outside seating. It was stipulated that they would not have it. So I don't know, you know, what you would do in a case like that.
Yes, Jeff.
Well, that depends on the board's, what the board's pleasure is. Um, if we accommodate Thirsty's and other uses of um, restaurants and tavern uses, uh, then really, the resolution ought to be modified that, that would eliminate the word that current, the words that currently possess a valid special use permit pursuant to the code of the Village of Pittsburgh, and just say established restaurants and taverns. If that's the board's preference.
Yeah, I don't know that I would feel comfortable with, with removing that, because when we discussed it in the very beginning, granting these, uh, I'm going to call them powers uh, to the building inspector, it was with the understanding that it was still under the, still subject to special use permit, and that's, and that was what we were using as the trigger. So uh, I, I, I would need a lot more discussion regarding that one. But I do believe that as the, as the code stands, or the resolution stands this evening, I would be accepting of extending it as, as it exists currently, but just extending the timeline. Into the summary, into the file, yeah.
Um, thank you, Lily, for, for raising that point. I, just a point of clarification, so um, we're saying that there are some, there's one tavern that we know of that is an existing non-conforming use, I believe, instead of possessing a special use permit. Um, and, and we would uh, for consideration would be whether or not we change the language to allow all taverns, restaurants to be able to um, to have outdoor seating under this resolution. What else falls in the existing non-conforming category other than Thirsty's in the village?
I don't, I don't think there would be another establishment other than Thirsty's. Sorry, this is Steve again. I don't think there is a um, other establishment other than Thirsty's. Does Copperleaf have a special use permit? I don't remember.
No, they're.
They do, they do not.
All right, and I know they have all, they have inquired about being able to place a couple of tables out in front due to the fact of restrictive, the restricted um, number of patrons. And that's purely up to the board as how you, you know.
Well, I, I think, I would like to hear from nearby residents on that one, because that was, that was very specific when that, when that uh, application was received, a discussion uh, regarding its location and proximity to neighboring uh, to neighborhoods. So I think critical to, to this, what we're talking about right now, would be hearing from the residents. Thank you.
Uh, John, John Lindbeck had a, John, did you have your hand up, John? Yes.
Yes, I did, thank you. Um, Copperleaf, uh, they haven't opened yet, so there's really no data to support their need for outdoor seating. Uh, the business received their approvals under what I'm going to call somewhat questionable pretenses, and the owner and the property management were adamant and absolutely refused to follow the site plan process when this uh, establishment was conceived. Uh, there's ongoing issues with the property, most notably the dumpsters that we've talked about, and this business is only going to add to that situation. Uh, we talked about um, you know, the potential for aromas, because they are brewing, uh, to have that establishment 75 feet away from my house and have outdoor seating and whatever else they'll decide they want to do. Uh, I'd respectfully request that this business be exempted from any type of outdoor seating. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Dorothea, are there comments? I see your hand up.
Yep, um, Mr. Pierce again requests to speak to the board.
Yes, Art?
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Actually, I just sent uh, a couple of comments to everybody. Number one, it repeatedly throughout the resolution, it talks about. uh, expansion of outdoor seating, uh, they can, that it can be resume outdoor seating. Resume assumes that you have a permitted use for outdoor seating to begin with. Which once again, uh, my understanding is Copperleaf does not have outdoor seating, so that cannot, this resolution would not and should not be applied to them. Um, with a lot of considerations, and here again, I'm not picking on anyone's business, but the considerations are number one, outside seating is not permitted to begin with. Number two is what are the limits for the outdoor seating for any location relative to parking? Has anybody seen any plans, considerations of the breadth and scope of the limits of parking relative to the limits of the expanded outdoor seating relative to the hours that people can be sitting out in, um, out there, here again with beverage and, and, and other. There's too many questions on this resolution uh, that I, I can't see the board accepting or approving this tonight. The other thing it refers to in the exhibit, uh, excuse me, in the resolution to an exhibit A. I don't know what exhibit A refers to. If, and, and in the future, I reckon, can I suggest to the board as well as the other boards in the village? Most municipalities or a good number of municipalities uh, throughout the state and the nation have online viewing of documents as the board is bringing them up for view. Um, strongly recommend for the sake of any residents calling in, especially during the Zoom meetings, that they have some mechanism so on screen, the board can share documents such as the resolution. Um, but, so I go back to the original question though, that the resolution talks about repeatedly within all the wherewithal is to resume outdoor dining service. So the basis of the resolution is that you have to have already have a permitted a right for outdoor seating to begin with, and if you don't, then you're not coming under this resolution.
Uh, yeah, yes, Steve, thank you, Art. Thanks, thanks for that.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I just, I want to point out something in regards to, to, and I understand everybody's concern, but you have lock thirty or not lock thirty-two, but you have label seven right there who already has outdoor seating. You have olives that already has outdoor seating. The, if, if Copperleaf, you know, and it's like you said, purely at their board, they're talking about three small tables in the, in and right up against the building, not taking up any parking spaces, but allowing them to have a few more patrons. They are open. There's been no, no ill, you know, anything that I've known, everybody was really happy they're open. I mean, we're talking about trying to help businesses survive here in a very difficult time. Which is why these people took a long time to open based on what was going on with COVID. Um, they would not be taking any parking spaces. The three tables they're talking about would be in the quadrant where the lumberyard, um, so away from the residential areas. There's nothing outside the building towards the residential houses. They would be right in front where the door is. Um, I, I don't see an impact on parking or noise compared to, um, label seven or olives, but like I said, this is purely a board, a board decision.
Well, also it's my understanding, you know, I'm sort of new to the movie here, but it's my understanding that this, this, um, this resolution was put in place because, uh, there was, there was limitations on the restaurants due to COVID. Um, so parking really wouldn't have been an issue per se because frankly, there were fewer patrons. Um, you know, according to New York state law. So, uh, you know, I think we have to factor that in as well. And John, you had your hand up, I think, did you?
Yes, uh, yes, and, and Steve, uh, just, just a couple of points. Olives and label seven had their outdoor seating long before COVID. Um, I, I strongly believe that this Copperleaf and the owner of that property were so contentious during the application process for this building that they weren't going to participate in the village processes. And I don't think they should therefore benefit from any relief that the village is offering other restaurants and taverns that have followed the rules. And, um, you say they're open now. You don't live where I live and hear people walking to their cars at night when these places close. They're loud, there's occasional bottles being thrown, and it's annoying. So, uh, if you want to come down here some night and sit and listen to what goes on, you're more than welcome to. But I don't think they deserve the opportunity.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I mean, I think, you know, we, we need to speak to the resolution. I don't know that we even have any site plan or plans in for Copperleaf for any of this. Um, there are businesses right now that are, um, you know, using the seating under this current resolution. It's about an extension of it. Uh, Dorothea, your hands up?
Yes, Justin Blescher would like to address the board as well.
Justin?
Yes, um, thank you very much. Just to chime in, I, I really think this is an opportunity to expand eligibility for this. My suggestion would also be to expand this to include some of the temporary permit concerns. And instead of saying, uh, you know, food service establishments that have a um, a temporary or a special use permit, you could also possibly include a temporary zoning permit, um, granted in the last two years or a temporary use permit, um, sorry, not a temporary use permit. Uh, what is the current name of our, our permits? So they used to be called temporary zoning permits. Uh, now they're called, I think, temporary use permits. Is that right? Anyway. Um, so my, so my thought is, uh, there's been concern about handling things like the farmer's markets and, um, the, the hot dog cart, um, other, the Little League, a variety of other things. Could this all be granted in here wrapped into this? So that people that have already had things approved be given easy access to renewals and, uh, outdoor seating so that, uh, we can accommodate these businesses during this challenging time. Um, I was hoping we could work on some code updates to fix some of our problems with temporary permits. So I kind of thought wrapping it into here might be a convenient place to allow um, proposed things that we routinely approve to get re-approved administratively by the building inspector without, um, any onerous, um, new regulations on the applicants.
Justin, thank you for your comments. I, I don't want us to get too far afield because this resolution, uh, originally, I believe, and if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, this resolution was a response to the COVID pandemic. And I think what we're talking, you know, it seems like we're expanding the scope a little bit here and it may become something else that we may need to address in greater detail. Jeff, if you'd like to weigh in on that in terms of, I'm just throwing that out, that what I'm reading is that this is a response to the pandemic, to COVID. And it's about expanding it because we're still not fully on the other side of it. Or, or extending it, not expanding it, excuse me. Jeff?
That's my understanding of the discussion. Uh, what Justin's discussing is a, a more far-reaching modification of, of our code provisions about who does what approvals for what uses. And I, I think that's still on schedule to be discussed and resolved. But the basis for this revolu- resolution was the pandemic and the controls on restaurants that were put in place by the governor because of those, because of the pandemic. And there are still those controls in place, so that in my mind would be the basis for this continuing emergency authority that you've granted to the building inspector, code enforcement officer. I mean, that's, that's how I, I see the, the, the support for this kind of measure.
That's my understanding, that this is actually cut more of a discreet resolution um, because of the immediate needs of the existing businesses that were really hurting during the pandemic. And I think we need to ratchet down, take a look at that, what's before us tonight, and either make a decision, decision to amend it in some way. Or, uh, we certainly have to come up with a date for the extension as well. Um, or that it needs further discussion, but I think we need to take an action. I think we've had some very good discussions and I think out of this discussion, and clearly there's a need to look at, uh, broaden the scope in other areas in terms of our code and what's, what, what's allowed. Yes, Steve?
I would ask, I would ask the board to extend it until the end of October or until all restrictions are relieved from the restaurants by the governor.
Are there any comments on Steve's suggestion? Yes, oh, Ann? Yes, hands up?
Yeah, um, I think you're talking about two different things. I'd be all for the extension of, um, outdoor seating, but I think new businesses need to apply. I don't think they should be automatically grandfathered in.
Yes, Steve, yes.
Yeah, they won't, they won't be just grandfathered in. Anybody who, who wants outdoor seating is going to have to apply. They're going to have to come up with a plan and make sure it falls within the fire, uh, and public safety issues. So not, nobody just, this, this does not carte blanche um, everybody to do this without coming to me to some sort of a plan and getting approval. Um, and the other thing, it just, a side comment, uh, for you, John, I understand. Um, and like you said, I will go after the site plan and the things on, on, um, 50 State Street, but I hope that we don't go after Copperleaf for somebody else. Copperleaf has nothing to do.
We can, let's, let's, I would like to deal with that offline. I think we have a resolution before us. And, and we can pursue that and John, we can get back with you about that as well. I think, you know, and Art, I know you brought, raised some serious concerns. Um, I'd like to bring the resolution back and we, uh, Steve has made the suggestion that, uh, the current resolution be extended to the end of October or until the restrictions are lifted by the state of New York. Is there further discuss, oh, yes, Justin?
Uh, can we just clarify, um, Steve's suggestion and, and say whichever is sooner of those two dates?
Okay.
Say that again.
Yes, Lily.
I couldn't, I'm sorry, I missed what Justin said.
So Steve's suggestion was that, um, it'd be the end of October or when Governor Cuomo's executive order is lifted. And I, I just had to clarify, it should be the, the, um, sooner of those two dates. So that it's not
Right, that's a good one. Thank you. Yes, Lily?
Uh, I, I, I would also support the extension of the, our existing, um, program on allowing outside seating for relief of COVID, um, restrictions that currently exist on existing, um, businesses. Uh, and I want to clarify that it applies only to those who hold a valid special use permit. And I would, I would then agree to that resolution for the date extension.
Well, are you making a motion?
I will make that motion, yes, I will.
Okay.
I just made it. Do I have to repeat it?
Just making sure.
Thank you very much. Yes, so that is my motion.
Okay, thank you, Lily. Is, is there a second? Yes, Justin?
I will second the motion.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Trust, uh, Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Um, there's continued chat questions in there and I suggest that maybe those can be answered after the meeting or in a different text so we can move on.
Sure, sure, we can get to that at some point. Sorry we missed some of them, but it, we need to move on here. We have, um, a public hearing. Uh, the first item before us for the public hearing is a local law, excuse me, regarding, uh, short-term retail. Uh, for those of you listening, it's sort of, you know, something that's a pop-up or just very temporary, uh, seasonal. And, um, I have, am asking the board if you have any comments before we open the public hearing on the law.
Real quick, quick, is the board okay with me continuing to share my screen as requested by the residents?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Thank you. It's helpful for residents, certainly. Thank you very much. Yes, Justin, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I did have some concerns about this code. The, the first would be that it seems to overlap with the temporary use permit code, which is currently delegated to the zoning board of appeals. Um, I think that that's the appropriate board overall to be handling these issues. Uh, and as a former member of the, the ZBA, um, I appreciated the diligence with which the, the board members uh, addressed these, uh, the temporary permits that were brought up in front of it. I, I think there are some other issues, uh, with this code. And I, I don't, um, I, I'm not sure exactly where to start. Um, I would like to think through this a little bit more. There, there certainly are some issues that I would like to straighten out with the temporary use permits. Making the, the list of, of uses that are permitted, uh, specific, um, would be one of those. And, uh, clarifying the scope of the, the temporary permit authority. I think there are some good code examples to follow in that regard. Uh, the Village of East Aurora has a, a pretty good code, uh, concerning temporary use permits. Um, but I, I wouldn't, um, I, I'm concerned if the board adopts two pieces of code and it's not clear which board has responsibility for authorizing these kinds of uses. Um, so if possible, I would like to, um, postpone this discussion and, and not adopt this code tonight.
Thank you for that. Um, I think it might be helpful, um, and you know, maybe Jeff, you could weigh in on this as well. To talk about the genesis of how this came about, this particular uh, piece of code, uh, before us tonight.
My understanding of the genesis is that, uh, when this came up last year, um, the ZBA indicated that they didn't think they had jurisdiction to grant this permit, uh, this kind of permit for the next item that's on your agenda, which is Holiday Hots. So we, the, the board, the village, not really the board, the village utilized uh, the transient merchant permit, which is a permit issued by the clerk, was a permit issued by the clerk, uh, that would allow, uh, Mr. Clotten to, to do business. However, really in reviewing that particular code provision, it was an inappropriate designation of discretionary power to a non-discretion, a person who should not have discretionary power, that being the clerk. So the, that's the genesis of how we're here. Uh, those two, two, two things combined with this issue on the horizon for Holiday Hots and the farmer's market. Uh, this was the answer.
Is there any, any other comment from, uh, any board member on this?
It, uh, Stetzer?
Yes, Renee?
Um, if we, uh, do what, uh, trustee Lightgib is asking and, and pause to, to research this a little bit more, what the, the two impending permits, can we handle them the way we did last year for both the farmer's market and, um, Holiday Hots?
We cannot. Those code, the, that particular code provision, transient merchant was removed from the code for the reasons I just said.
Right, okay.
So this is addressing a code change because now we have no mechanism unless we adopt something like this. Um, am I correct? We have no mechanism to grant these permits? Or as trustee Lightgib was saying, was indicating that he felt that there was somehow an overlap, that this was something that the, uh, planning and zoning board could address.
I can only tell you that what we are doing is based on the ZBA's indication to the code enforcement officer that they didn't feel like they had jurisdiction to grant the, the type of permit that Mr. Clot, uh, Clotton is looking for.
Which led us to this point, so I, I, I'm, I'm confused because I feel like we're at cross purposes. Maybe, um, trustee Lightgib, if you could weigh in a little bit more on that because you were on that board and we're all hearing tonight that the board felt that they couldn't address this particular permit. So I'm trying to understand how this is, how you, what, what you're seeing here. So we, please help us.
Sure, I, I'm not exactly sure how much I, I can help. I, I, um, was on the board when we issued temporary use permits. I'm not sure which clause in the code right now is blocking, um, I'm not sure which clause in the code right now is blocking us from being, from the ZBA being able to review a temporary use permit for Holiday Hots.
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, my understanding and what came is because it's a rest, the space is a limited office residential. And the residential caveat of that location will not allow the temporary use permit or temporary zoning permit from the planning board. That was my understanding or the zoning board from Justin B.
Okay, so. Well, I make a motion to open the public hearing. Let's hear from the public on this. Because we can always continue the public hearing if needed and do additional research, but we may have people from the public that want to speak tonight. Yes. Okay, second, hang on, second. Second from trustee Lightgib.
Okay, trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib.
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. And anybody wish to comment? I saw Mr. Limbeck, sorry.
Good evening, John Limbeck, 62 State Street. I understand, you know, that there's some question about the, you know, how do we do it aspect of this? I'm hoping that we could come up with something tonight that would allow Mr. Clotten to continue his business. He is a, he's an attraction in and of himself here in the village. And you know, it's a clean operation. He's got a very loyal following. And I would really hate to see him delayed in any way, shape or form from running his business because I think it's a, it's a huge benefit to the village. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there any other comments from the public? Dorothea? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Please state your name.
I'm Charlie Clotten and I'm the owner of Holiday Hots, that's me. So first of all, thank you, everybody, for trying to work this out. I appreciate it. It's been a really rough year. There's a couple of things in this that I'm not too crazy about either, really. Just one in particular is 189.9. And I don't really understand it, this right of entry and access to books on it. I have a concern with it. It just, to me, it seems like, I mean, if New York State wanted to look at my books, if the federal government wanted to look at my books, they would have just cause to look at my books. They wouldn't have to get, you know, a warrant to come look at my books. And this is just, the books are open to anybody from the village. And I don't know the reason why, why they need access to my books.
I'd like our attorney to please respond to that comment. Thank you. Jeff? Oh.
I was looking at the section that Mr. Clotten referred to.
Okay.
This is really, it just deals with the right of us to inspect the premises, basically. I mean, if this were to occur inside inside a structure, that's really what we're talking about, is getting entry. Perhaps the access to books should be taken out of the, out of the title. I don't, the provision doesn't really talk about access to books. So the access to books could come out of that title. That would be less restrictive and it's a change that could be made. But if you read the actual provision, we're not talking about getting into his books or anybody's books.
It does have, we need to remove it from the end statement as well there at the end of the paragraph.
Sorry. Oh, yeah, I don't really, I think that's a carryover from the transient merchant. We don't really need access to the books because we're not imposing a tax based upon sales. We're imposing a tax based upon, or a fee based upon the use. So that can come out of there. That's, that's fine, as far as I'm concerned. Of course, it's up to the board.
I support striking that. I don't, I don't want access to your books. I don't even want access to mine.
I wonder if Steve has a different thought.
Yeah, Steve, did you have your hand up?
I don't want to touch Charlie's books.
We just want your hand up, okay.
Or anybody's. That was the whole purpose of the way this was worded and to do it as a permit fee versus a tax and having to do all that. It made it cleaner as far as Jeff and I were concerned. So that, I'm all supportive of striking that out of the law.
Is the board in support? Can you indicate that you're comfortable striking those references from this particular section of the law? Yes, Renee?
Oh, I was giving you a thumbs up, yes.
Oh, thumbs up, okay. Thought it was hand up. Okay, any other thoughts? We're good with that then? I mean, I support that. I think, you know, we're not in the business of looking at your books.
Okay, so the whole section would be struck out, that would be struck out of that law? Excuse me.
I don't know that it's the whole section. Wait a second. Jeff, can you speak to that? Are we deleting that whole section or is it?
No, I mean, it's up to the board whether, and I guess I'd ask Steve to chime in. It's up to the board as to whether or not we should have access. We probably have access through other mechanisms. Is that correct, Steve? Don't you have a right to inspect or not?
Yes, I would, I would strike everything after business hours.
What?
Hang on, where?
Where are you? I would strike for the purpose of entertaining amount of stock merchandise or sales made.
All right, yeah. I think that matters.
Yep, anytime during business hours, period. Because I would like the right to go into some temporary business to see what's going on. I mean, it's, there's nothing wrong with that. I don't want access to anybody's books or financial records. But somebody should be able to inspect based on the type of business that may come in.
Okay, is everybody clear on that? The recommendation is that the third line down, it is ended. We end this segment at anytime during business hours, period. And the rest of that language is we strike from that section. I support that. Okay?
We're also striking from the title of the section, access to books.
Right, right. Okay. Any other comments?
That works for me.
Okay, okay. And thank you for that. Thank you. It's important. Thank you. Any other comments? Dorothea?
Justin Bleacher is requested to speak to the board.
Thank you, Justin.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify what the problem was with the code. And this is code section 21024.10. It says that no outdoor assembly, sale, display and storage area shall be located in a residential district. That is one of the key problems. Now, last week, I had sent around an alternative and much more minor code revision to completely fix all these issues, in my opinion. So I sent that to Steve. He said you would send it to Jeff. I sent it to the mayor. I also sent a copy to Mr. Lightgib. It sounds like that hasn't been given any consideration at all. But my suggestion was to, for that particular clause, was to change it to basically include the so-called institutional properties in residential districts such as libraries, such as municipal property, churches, schools, things like that. I don't think we want to include residential homes and dwellings for conducting commercial operations. But I think these other operations that are, I'm calling them institutional in nature, I don't see any issue with that. You know, the community center isn't included in there. So I include some suggestions for language for that, that would fix that issue. Some other issues that I was wondering about is, first of all, this law is really badly worded, in my opinion, and really needs some revisions. My reading of this law is anything you do that's somewhat commercial in nature for less than nine months needs a permit. That would include me listing something on eBay. Do I need a permit to list something on eBay? I think that's pretty intrusive. That would include any, any business in this village. Let's say a church wants a bake sale. Can't do it without a permit from the trustees. This is incredibly intrusive, in my opinion, on normal operations. What the wording says is a permit is required. Or sorry, let me read this. This is 189.4. "It shall be unlawful for any person, firm or corporation to conduct or operate or permit to be conducted or operate a short-term business or charitable use within the Village of Pittsburgh without first obtaining a permit from the Board of Trustees." That is absolutely anything, whether the use is otherwise permitted or not. So that would, that would include a pop-up business, like, you know, say a lacrosse store wants to come up again. Let's say a Christmas holiday store wants to come up again. What we've been talking about is things that are otherwise forbidden from code, but this law does not say that. It says absolutely anything you do on a short-term basis needs a permit.
Thank you, Justin. Justin, maybe I missed something. I'm looking at section 189.3, the exceptions. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to take a look at that. This chapter.
Door-to-door sales. It doesn't say eBay sales. It doesn't say.
Hang on, everybody. It excludes churches, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Rotary Clubs, Lion Clubs, Kiwanis, like civic-minded groups.
Only door-to-door sales by those groups, not after establishments like a church. So churches would be prohibited from fundraisers by this code without a permit.
Churches are listed in the exception.
Only door-to-door sales by churches.
Do you want me to speak to this?
Yes, thank you.
So this deals with short-term retail businesses. It doesn't, and I don't think that we're going to categorize people who sell on eBay from their homes as a business. I don't think we're going to categorize a church as a business. This targets people who are in, want a short-term retail business. Churches are not a retail business.
Thanks for that clarification.
It does not only apply to retail businesses. It also applies to charitable uses, which would include a church. So I, I'm just bringing this up.
Appreciate it.
I don't want to get in a debate, but the wording needs to be worked on in this. This is not ready to go. This looks like it needs some clearer thing. It also looks like it conflicts with home business laws and code. And if you want to do this, it needs some clarification. My suggestion, as I suggested, and I sent this out last week, I sent out some suggestions much less intrusive that would completely fix all these issues.
Justin, thank you. I want to give people an opportunity to comment and I thank you very much for your input. We all appreciate it. Dorothea?
I don't have anybody else in the chat at this time.
I see, I can't see, I can't see your face. So, yeah, hi, yeah. I see the hand only. Yes. Oh, is that Dave? I can't see.
It is Dave, Dave Ferris.
Thank you. No, your hand was in front of your face, Dave. I couldn't see. Go ahead. We can't hear you. Can't hear you. You look unmuted, but we can't hear them. Nope. Do you want to write a comment in, maybe? Something's wrong with your audio.
Using a laptop, Dave, unplug your headset.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I think immediately go to meeting. I have a different setting than a Zoom. The exception paragraph could easily be changed to take care of the major concern that Justin raised. I think the first part of the phrase, "shall not apply to door-to-door sales", could be put at the end. So it should not apply to civic groups, churches, girl or boy scouts, blah, 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 you know, civic-minded groups, or to door-to-door sales by civic groups. So it could be an outside group that comes in with a door-to-door sale. You know, there is not a Girl Scout site per se, but I think that putting that door-to-door at the end of those lists of civic groups, so any civic group, like a church as a location, is allowed to operate. And then door-to-door sales of a group coming and say, "Lilly does a door-to-door sale", that would be permitted. I think the wording is a problem.
Thanks for that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, what are the thoughts, folks?
Yeah, the other quick comment I have, I thought the intent of this is more to limit where people, the public is coming to a site for something being sold. So I don't see eBay as applying. We're not having people line up at someone's house because they're eBay. They come and pick up and air me a mail. That's no different than me selling something, an individual item. I thought it's more focused on something that would cause traffic to come to a site because of the way a sale is being conducted. So I think there's a way, there must be a way to work around that pretty easily.
I thought that was helpful with redoing the wording. Yeah. Any other comments? Dorothea?
With that, I'll shut up.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, Mayor Plummer, we have a comment from KP. "Girl Scouts also offer cookies via sidewalk or parking lot cookie booths." I think that amendment suggested would cover that as well.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Any other thoughts? Jeff, what about that change in wording, just to, you know, clarify a little bit?
Makes a lot of sense to me. Thanks, Dave, for doing a little wordsmithing.
Yeah.
May I suggest along the wordsmithing lines that you change it also to not apply to any legally, any businesses that comply with, with uses and laws? So the point was to have this comply to things that don't comply with laws. You don't want to apply this to people that do comply with our existing laws and already authorized and then grant them an initial level of permit. So as an example, and I'm not sure this actually fixes the problem as this doesn't say anywhere where it grants a zoning exception for any of these uses. My reading of this is if someone like the Panthers literally wanted to come in, they got to apply to two boards. They got to apply to both the trustees and the zoning board for a permit. That's one of my readings of this. So anyway, that's my comment for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Jeff, do you have a thought about that, about what Justin's saying?
I mean, you could add in the short-term retail business or charitable use definition, a business or charitable use conducted in the property of the Village of Pittsburgh. And then at the very end, put, "which is not otherwise permitted by, by the code of the Village of Pittsburgh."
That would address it, yeah. Yes, Justin, Lightgib, yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion and I appreciate and agree with all of the suggestions here. I think that Justin Bleacher's last suggestion as well also eliminates the short-term conflict with the temporary use permits. So if the temporary use permit is a valid process for approving something, then they go through that and this becomes a fallback mechanism to basically meet the needs that we see today, given the the fact that we need to resolve the temporary use permit section of code. I think that ultimately that's the better approach to fix this and I hope that the jurisdiction for approving temporary use permits can go back to that board, including these things like Holiday Hots. But, you know, we can, we can adopt this code and we can also repeal it later when we do fix temporary use permits. So I, I hope that's the direction that we go in.
Great, thank you. You know, we're talking about changing this. Jeff, if you could give us the wording on both of these, these sections. So it's 189.2 under definite. So it's 189.2 under definitions. Um, if you could read out what it should look like as amended? So we all hear, hear that?
Yeah, I can do that. But, but, uh, so 189.2, you're going to add, um, after or less, which is not otherwise permitted by the code of the Village of Pittsburgh.
Okay.
Uh, you're going to, in 189.3, uh, take out, shall not apply, and you're going to take out door-to-door.
Mm-hmm.
And you're going to add and door-to-door sales of like civic-minded groups, right before like civic-minded groups.
Can you read just the entire sentence then? So, because I'm sort of not following that. Just read it as.
This chapter shall not apply to sales by civics group, civic groups, churches, girls or boy scouts, Rotary Clubs, Lion Clubs, Kiwanis, and door-to-door sales of like civic-minded groups.
Thank you. Is that clear to everybody? I think that, I think there's greater clarity with, with these suggestions, personally.
And the last change, the last change that I have.
Yep.
Is the title of 189.9 will be right of entry. And the whole paragraph will end in the third line with the words during business hours, period.
Okay, those are the three changes that we have. Are there any comments from the board? Are we in agreement that those seem to clarify?
Do we mention the books too, as well? Sorry.
That's taken out.
Yep.
Yeah.
That was the last one that I referenced.
Great, thanks.
So it's simply titled now right of entry. And there's no word books is in there. Okay, any more comments from the public? I make a motion to close the public hearing at this time. Is there a second?
Lanfear's second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments at this time before the board? Otherwise, we'll talk about seeker. Jeff?
Was that a question for me, Mayor?
Yeah. Yeah, we're. About seeker.
The next step would be seeker. My suggestion is the board that they determine it to be a type-two action under, uh, 617.5, sub-paragraph, little c, sub-paragraph, little 21. I'm not little 21, sub-paragraph 21. As a temporary, is dealing with temporary uses that have no permanent impacts on the environment. And that can be handled by resolution.
Somebody want to make the resolution?
Well, I will make that motion transfer, uh, trustee Lanfear. That we make the type, type-two determination, is that right, Jeff?
That is correct.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Trustee Lightgeb's second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now we have the final motion to adopt the law, uh, concerning short-term retail businesses and charitable uses. Motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
Lanfear's second.
Do we need to add the corrections or, um, from earlier in the resol, in the?
Yes, I think that's a good idea, Mayor Plummer, to just amend your motion to include the revisions previously read into the record.
Exactly. What Jeff said, to, to, the motion as amended to, uh, with the corrections as reflected in the record. Thanks, Renee.
Roll call. Trustee Keating, or trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. And thanks, everybody, for your, uh, word smithing and your comments. Everything was really helpful. Uh, we have another public hearing, and, uh, this one is the application from Harla Day Hots for a temporary business permit. And are there any comments from the board? Okay, um, I make a motion that we open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Stetser's second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, any comments? Is Charlie here? There you are. Any comments from the public? Oh, hello, trustee Keating. Who won?
Uh, we lost.
Oh.
Yeah, in the fifth, it was, it was heartbreaking in the playoffs. Yeah. Sorry I'm late, guys.
Thank you for joining. Yes, I see, John, your hand is up. John Lindbeck?
Yes, John Lindbeck, 62 State Street. Um, I'd like to reiterate my heartfelt desire to have this, uh, permit approved, uh, because I think Harla Day Hots is a wonderful addition to the village every year. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there any other comments from the public? Dorothea, do we have anything coming in?
I have nothing from chat. Um, Mr. Clatten would like to speak in the meantime while I'm checking email.
Okay, yes, Charlie?
Yeah, I would just like to add that, um, you know, nothing has changed over the past. I, I've been here for 11 years, and, and nothing has changed. So, you know, we've been doing business the same way for 11 years, and, um, I, personally, I, I, first of all, I appreciate everything John said to me. You make me feel good, John. Thank you. Um, I think we're a nice addition to the village. I mean, at least that's the feedback I get from my customers and from people in general that, that live near there and that work there. They're, they're pretty appreciative that we're out there, and especially with the pandemic going on right now, it's a nice option for people that they could just grab their food and go, and everybody's outdoors, and it's a comfortable area, and people feel safe, and they feel, it brings back a little sense of normalcy, and it's, it's a nice thing. And we, we're legit people. We're not, you know what I mean? We've been there long enough that I think we've proven that we're legit people. We're not trying to do anything crazy. And, 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 um, I know it's kind of beating at that horse, getting back to, but I, I just don't understand how we got here. Um, our business is surrounded by a law office on one side, a business office on the other side, across the street is a bank, the house next to the, to the bank is owned by the fire department, and my understanding is it's vacant, and it's going to be vacant for a while. Um, and the spot that we were on was a doctor's office. So this area is not a residential area. I mean, the houses, but they used as businesses. So I just don't know how we got here, and I, I just hope that this could be approved, and I want to work on Monday. So that's all, but thank you. I, I appreciate everybody and, and everything you guys have done for me over the years to, to get us in there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other comments from the public or, Dorothea, any, any comments coming in?
I have no further comments from the public or through email.
Okay, I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second? Come on.
Lightgeb's second.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick, quick, uh, comments, um, and it's only, um, in your letter of March 22nd, um, you put in the wrong date for your operation. You said it was through 2020. It's supposed to.
I, I saw that as well, yeah. I saw that as well. I, it's one of those, I change the dates on the computer, that's what it is, so.
No, I'm, I'm right through with you. No, same thing, you know, it's the cut and paste. We all do it. But I just want to, for the record, we just want to have the accurate date of, um, 2021. That's all, just, just, uh, housekeeping, basically. And, um, number four on the village application, we have the hours, um, as Sunday through Sunday, and I believe Monday through Sunday with the, uh, if there's a special event, then Saturday and Sunday. Just again, just making sure we're matching up with what was.
Okay.
Done, that's all, that's all that is, just housekeeping, because I do the same thing when I'm cutting and pasting. I know that's.
And I noticed that when I saw the application online, I said, oh, boy, I didn't change that date, you know? And I only check it 10 times before I send it, so, yeah.
It's, it's like anything. Um, are there any other comments, comments from the board?
I just have one, and I'm sorry I'm late, and there's no need for a recap. I'm just wondering, did we address the cost of the permit on this application? Did we already sort that before I got here?
No.
Uh, no? Short answer.
Um, my question is, I, I think a couple of years ago it was around 100, and, and it's gone up significantly. Steve, do you know anything about this?
Um, well, actually, last, we're a little higher than he was last year based on the tax, um, based on a monthly fee, but we're in line with what the town charges for the space. Um, it's purely up to the board's wishes. I, I have no, no stink in the game either way, whichever way you want it. We just pick some our, some numbers based on other charges for other things, and, um, just, you know, simple things like, uh, Dorothea knows, to advertise this for the $100. I mean, our, the village's costs have gone up and everything, so, I, I mean, it's purely up to the board. Right now it's slated for $50 for a single use, 100 per month. Um, however the board wants to deal with that is up to them.
And I would remind the board, we are reviewing the fee schedule as part of the organizational meeting, um, so that's something if we want to change that number, so they can get it at that time.
Yes, we have that, we have that agenda.
Okay, that, that sounds good. Let's cover it then, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dan. And Jeff, you had your hand up.
Of course, Dorothea beat me to it.
What she said, okay. Uh, let's see, where, where are we? I lost my, my train of thought here. We close the hearing, okay.
We're at the modification of chapter 195 speed limits, looking to set a public hearing.
No, no.
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't done anything with the permit.
We haven't been a close vote in.
Oh, sorry, I was done with.
I made, okay, I'm, I make a motion to approve.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Please.
I think it would be important to state for the record, this is again a, a type-two seeker before the same reasons.
I'm so sorry, you're right. I'm still, still in the, I'm a newbie. Yes, the seeker, thank you. Go ahead.
So the same motion would be appropriate here that, that we made last time, so same seeker provision.
Is there a motion? A resolution about seeker to adopt this? Make the declaration, anybody?
Um, I'll make the resolution to make this a type-two, declare this a type-two action under seeker 617.2, little c, 21. I think I got the right, set the right code.
Jeff?
It's dot five, but don't worry about it.
Oh, dot five?
Okay, my bad.
I was impressed.
Lanfear's second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee, trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the application, uh, from Harla, Harla Day Hots with the same conditions as last year.
I'll second the motion, Keating.
Roll call. Trustee Stetser? Oh, trustee Lightgeb has his hand up.
Sir, uh, do we need to amend the date as, uh, Mayor Plummer mentioned earlier? Or is that, um, or is that okay?
We could just state that emotion with amendments?
Yes, I'd just like to amend the emotion as, as suggested.
Thank you. So trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Get him.
Trustee background?
Yes.
I know, I'm looking.
Oof, okay. Thank you. Uh, trustee Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, our next.
See you on Monday, Charlie.
You'll probably see everybody. Okay, um, our next item is to, um, set up a public hearing for the modification of chapter 195, the speed limits.
Um, I'm looking.
Yeah.
Going to be the same night as.
It's going to be May, yeah, it's May 25th, again, at 7:00.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to set the hearing date for modifying chapter 195 of the code of the Village of Pittsburgh, um, at May 25th at 7:00 PM, or is it 7:15?
Um, we've been posting it, we've been posting for 7:00 PM, and if we end up virtual, it's 7:15, just to give the public a chance.
Lightgeb's second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item up, updated home rule resolution for, um, the state's speed limit legislation. Uh, Dorothea, or Renee, do you want to speak to that? I mean, you've been really.
Sure, the, this is just, um, the language was amended per previous meetings. I don't want to go over all of that again. Um, nothing has changed since those previous meetings. We just need to adopt a new home rule resolution in support of the bill. It has to be submitted to, to Albany, to the Senate and Assembly, um, with these new bill numbers, and this is a requirement in order to pass, uh, the legislation at the, the state level.
Right, originally, originally we had wanted to do 20 miles per hour.
No, this is different. This is different. This is the, um, the, this is for the state.
Oh, for the state. Yeah, I got you, okay. Yeah. So, um. Collinating.
Yes, I know, it's very confusing because two speed limit things are on here, but, um, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt the home rule resolution in support of New York State Senate and Assembly Bill S29598 and A3532A.
Is there a second?
Lanfear's second.
Lanfear, second.
Trustee Liken has his hands up.
Oh, yes.
Uh, is, is there just a typo where it says now therefore be it resolved with Assembly member Barnes? Should be BYR instead of PY?
No, B Burns. BYR, yeah, let me-
Thank you.
We always mess up her name accidentally. Good catch.
Okay. Roll call trustees.
Wait, do I need to amend my, do I have to amend my resolution because of the correction? Or will we just fix it? How does that work?
It would be good practice.
Okay. I will, uh, I make a motion to adopt home rule resolution in support of the 25 mile per hour state legislation with the correction of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, paragraph 6, Assembly member Burns' name correctly spelled.
Okay. Lily, are you still seconding?
I, I guess I'm still seconding.
Okay, roll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Liken.
Liken, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Um, trust, Mayor Plummer, there's a comment in the chat. Art Pierce has some questions regarding state street ta- traffic that just popped in.
Art, can I, can I get back to you on that? Can I give you, I'd like to give him a call and follow up personally, if I may? Just because we have such a large agenda tonight and is that okay with Art?
I will let him know you will talk to him offline.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Actually, I'd like a couple, actually, ma'am, madam, I'd like to have a couple of questions. I appreciate the hour, but at the same time, a couple of questions relevant to state street traffic at some point.
Oh. Okay, well, is it, isn't it something that we can talk about offline? I mean, we, we have a budget adopt-
This, this is something that's here again, relevant to the entire Board of Trustees.
Oh, okay, okay. Sure.
I can wait till later, or if you, whatever, but-
Because we're, we're going to be getting into adopting our budget and also an organizational meeting, so, you know. Go ahead.
So number one, uh, since the start of the bridge, there's been no evidence of the Sheriff's Department in traffic, speed traffic control, none whatsoever. And interesting enough, uh, the traffic is getting more, uh, traveling at higher speeds as they come up from Shane Place up to the top of the, uh, connection with Shane Place and Route 31 State Street, and they gun it. So the number of vehicles and the speed of vehicles is higher than ever, race, treating it as a racetrack, heading east out, uh, eastbound out of the village on State Street. That's number one. Once again, with no evidence of Sheriff's Control out there, and I'd be appreciative of an update from Renee on that if possible. Secondly, the status of speed centuries that I understand the village has money for, and when they'd be purchased, located, and activated on State Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Renee, is there anything you'd quickly like to say to that, or do you want to speak to the sheriff?
I'll contact the new Zone A captain and see, Captain Elbari, and see what they're able to, what they're able to provide, or if they have even been out.
I agree with, I haven't seen any, any other sheriff's cars out there at all, so we may need to follow up for sure. Thank, thank you, Art.
But, well, what about the status of the centuries, the purchase of the centuries?
Well, those were approved.
Yes, so the question is when they would be installed and operated.
Right. Zach, do you have any thoughts on that? Any updates for us on the centuries?
Well, with the money that was approved, um, we wouldn't be able to do any purchasing until after the first of June. Once that comes around, then we'll just have to sort out which ones we are exactly going to be buying and then purchasing them and then putting them out. Art, I wanted to ask you, John Limbeck, also if you're still on. Did you guys happen to take notice if the speed century was effective at all in slowing people down on State Street?
No.
I concur. I think what we're talking about is the centuries that actually log it and identify the vehicles. Is that correct?
The ones that the village has, will not identify the vehicle. It will just flash the speed that the vehicle is traveling and log the time. This, the-
And I appreciate that, so then the question is what about the status of research in, in, in approving the ones that actually have videos and logged with that issued tickets?
That would be, I think, up through the Monroe County Sheriff's Department to, uh, to supply with, with their tow behind trailer speed centuries.
Hey, question, guys.
I'm not talking about those. I'm talking to ones that actually video, there was going to be research by the board and seeking to actually purchase them after research and utilize those for actually documenting, because the sheriff's not doing their job.
Are you talking about the automated enforcement? You're talking about automated enforcement, I think.
I'm sorry, there's interference. I'm not hearing what people are saying. There's some interference from somebody here.
Hey, uh, can I, can I jump in with a question? So we're not voting on anything tonight. In, in the interest of, uh, moving this along, Art, can, can we follow up, please, um, another time? Even tomorrow would be good during the day. Or drop your questions in an email. Thank you.
Well, Dan, first of all, I work during the day, and that's why we come into these meetings at night, number one. Sorry you couldn't make the earlier meeting, but number two is, this has been spoken to for months, if not a number of months, more than a year plus. I don't know what's more to discuss, other than the village, the residents are looking for actions by the trustees.
Thank you. And, and we will follow up, and we'll follow up after work. You know, I'm happy to, to chase it down with you, and I know all the other board members are as well. But we, we have other items that we do need to tend to, and I would like us to-
I, I can appreciate it, but it's once, the opportunity for residents to speak too, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and I'm glad, I'm glad you spoke. Thank you. And we will follow up, and I think the board members feel strongly about following up, in addition to me. Okay, um, returning to the 2021, 2022 budget adoption. Oh, yes, Jeff.
You want me to stick around for these two, last two things?
Oh, I, I say have a good night. And thank you very much.
I wish you all a good night as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, the budget. Where do we begin? Where's Mary? Is Mary, there she is. Okay.
I'm here. The last, uh, last one we met, it was left that, uh, the board was thinking about whether or not there should be a tax increase of 2.5% or whether to leave it flat as it currently is at $4.72 per thousand. The rest of the budget was modified in categories of newsletter advertising offset with contingency, so I'm just needing to have an answer on that part of it for tonight. And an adoption, please.
Are there any additional comments from the board? No?
Um, I, I do, guys. I'm driving home, um, from Sutherland, so I'll be online in about five minutes. But, uh, you know, my, my main question, maybe I can put the question out there and you guys can chat about it, is around the taxes and the sales tax estimate. We had already, last year, we, we knocked it down 20% for, to account for COVID. This year, um, I think we're estimating the same, and I wanted to revisit that because from what I understand, the state is recommending 6%. So can we chat about that for a bit? Because, so in a perfect world, we would go somewhere between 6 and 10% off of the 2019 high, and then, uh, and take all that money and put it toward the, um, contingency fund. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I'll be back online.
It was like in slow motion.
Yeah, sorry. Who's, yeah, oh, Justin, yes.
How much would that adjustment be, uh, from trustee Keating? And is that, can, uh, Mary, do you have confirmation that that is what the, uh, the state is recommending this year?
Um, I am going basically by what our actuals have been for the history for the Village of Pittsburgh mainly. And what you see up on screen is what we have been getting, and I am looking to receive at least another 102,000 just to clear out this year, which would put us over budget. I've added, add different onto my estimated number. I-
Overestimate? It's, it's above the estimate or over budget?
No, over the estimate.
Over the estimate.
Over, over the estimate, which is still lower than last year's-
Right.
Um, pre-pandemic number, the 581. So we're still in line and talking with Monroe County and our com- and the comptroller, our CPA, they're all recommending to still stay low. It was better for us to stay low and not, um, I don't know how I put it.
Overestimate?
Yeah, not overestimate this, this number here, because it is a huge number. We have a lot of expenses that it would, could roll out and could get lost in the process with the expenses. I'd rather have it come in higher than what we had planned on, and then as the year falls out, that money would go into fund balance. It's a safer route to take than to estimate it higher and then fall short of it in the end, because we're setting ourselves up for a deficit in that respect.
It's, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, we were really one of the few municipalities that, um, made the decision sort of early on with the pandemic to actually lower the percentage and become a little more conservative.
It is correct.
Yeah, um, and I think that, that served us pretty well at this, to this point, because some other municipalities are having a hard time, because they sort of kept their estimate on the high side, and were counting on that sales tax revenue that didn't happen.
Corrected.
Okay.
Alisa?
Yeah.
Alisa agreed, and 20% made a lot of sense last year when, if you remember, Renee and Lily, it was 20% last year, and we were doing it exactly a year ago, so it was like right when we shut down, and, and we had no idea what it was going to be. Things are more or less open right now, so I'm not saying we shouldn't reduce it. I'm just saying we shouldn't reduce it 20%. Something closer to 10 or even less would make logical sense.
We're kind of near that number at this point. Um, um, I'm just looking at how can I explain it to- That, I don't know. It's, it's like around 10 or 11% right now that I, that I had reduced it down to.
That's what I see.
Which is a safe, which is a safe number. I don't want to go too high in this category, because it could bite us in the end, and that could be a real, real problem and affect our fund balance. I'm trying to be careful. I'm kind of skating on the cusp of things there. So I'd rather be low in my estimate for the sales tax revenue coming in and have it come in higher, and then we have that cushion coming through rather than overestimating that number and then coming in too low, because then we're setting ourselves up for a deficit.
Let's just clarify, um, the number that you are working with now is not still maintaining that 20% drop. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the percentage you're saying now that you're, we're plugging in is roughly 10%, roughly?
Yes, roughly.
Okay, I thought it was 20 again. Okay.
No, no. I am compens, I am compensating for the fact that we are opening up a little bit, but I don't want to go too high over it, because we still don't have a clear path to say everything is open, everything is 100%. And a year from now, we'll be just fine, because we might not be. We still can get by this bug going backwards and having issues, so I, I, I am just being very, very cautious. It is a big number.
Can we find out what New York State is recommending, or the county? Because last year, the county, Mary, you got that number from the county, and it ended up being right at 20%, and that was wonderful. I'm just hoping we could find a couple percent. If, if the state and the county are saying 6, I'm comfortable with 6.
You're saying to drop this figure or raise it whichever way by another 6%?
No, I'm saying if the state and, and the county is recommending a 6% estimated amount lower than normal, then that's the number that we should use. That there's, there would then be no reason to pad it up. You said you're at 10, 11% off of our norm. I, I'd like to know what the state and the county are recommending.
I mean, I could look it out for you. I can check that all out. But here's the flip side of all this. I have to have this budget in by Friday. No questions asked. I gotta have it into the state by Friday, so, um, I, I don't know what you want to do there. I, I can, I can look it up and call them back and whatever. Justin did provide a whole bunch of information to me as well, and they're saying 6, but that's on the county level. It is not on the village level. That's why I'm going by our village history of what we've had in the years past, in years. As you see in here, we've had years that were a little bit leaner than others, so. And this is an unusual circumstance with the pandemic. I just want to be, I just want to be cautious, that's all.
I understand.
Because otherwise, otherwise bottom falls out of every other expense. Property taxes and this are the two, um, big monies that cover main part of the budget.
Understood. So the question I have, I'm sorry, Alisa, can I just jump in? Sorry. So understood, but what I would, what I would, uh, recommend that we do is get that information, and, uh, all this is going to do is put more money in the, in the fund balance. So it's either going to stay right where it is today, or put a little bit more money in the, in the, um, uh, contingency fund.
Providing, providing-
Hold on, Mary, hold on, hold on. So that's what I'm recommending, is that Mary does the research, reports to us. Either way, so we, we pass the budget with either the current amount or an amended amount that would only improve the contingency fund, is what I'm, I'm saying that we should do.
You, you're referring, improve the fund balance at the end. It also provided that our expenses fall out exactly where we planned them. It's, it's the revenues versus the expenses, and at the end of the day, for the year end, and that's what drives the money in the, um, in the fund balance.
Uh, Justin, Liken, you had your hand up, yes?
Uh, yeah, first of all, I just wanted to, to thank trustee Keating for making the suggestion, and, and, um, I, I agree that we should be as accurate as possible with these forecasts. And, and so good information there would, would be, would be helpful. I'm just wondering, though, how much of a, a dollar value, you know, if, if we're at 10% now, and, and the actual, um, recommended estimate is, is 6%? How, how much money are we talking about approximately? Because I can actually adjust the, uh, the analysis that I was working on and, and see if that tips the needle. Just as a point of reference, in, in the last meeting, when we were going over some analyses of the general fund, and how different tax rates would impact that, uh, something like $25,000 did not tip the needle. And, and so if we're going to postpone things and, and consider, uh, changing the, um, the estimated rate of the, uh, the sales tax that we pull in, I'd just like to see if that's actually going to make a considerable difference in, in the estimate that we looked at.
It's about a half million in, in, uh, in annual sales tax, so 10% of that is, so 50, so, you know, if you cut it another 4, it's not a huge amount of money. It's another 20K.
I also want to just circle back a little bit to what Mary said, and I want to make sure everybody caught it, that the 6% was based on numbers at the county level, not at the village level. So what you were looking at, your forecasting, Mary, was literally going back through village numbers.
Right, the screen that you have before you.
These are numbers, these, these are real numbers for our village. Has nothing to do with the county in terms of, okay.
These are the actual numbers we receive monies on.
Okay.
Right, and and so, but the the county number does matter, though, a little, Lisa, in that that is what that's, you know, the sales tax comes from them. And if they're estimating that it will be 6% less, then I would think that's the number we would use.
No, I understand.
10 or 11, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's two ways of looking at it, that's all. I was just trying to understand that and clarify it for everybody. So the action item then is that we, Mary's going to.
Can I speak? Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay, real quick, I just want to point out to the board, you need to adopt this budget tonight. We cannot delay. We cannot post, we can't have a meeting on Friday, we don't have the time. So the action item for the board is to adopt the budget. If this line comes in over and everything works out perfectly, that money would roll into fund balance anyway. So there really is no amendment to the budget. You could review this and do a budget amendment later in the year if you feel that's appropriate. But at this time, I would suggest that, you know, I understand you want to do the research. We don't have time prior to adopting this budget. We need to do that tonight.
I understand that, but I was going to say the action item for Mary would be to do the research. And we do need to adopt the budget. I mean, I think we were going to say the same thing. I'm right there with you.
Okay, thank you.
We have to take action, folks. And I'm all for adopting the budget as it stands and doing the research and we can amend it. I mean, does that make, at this point, moving forward? Thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the budget. And to be clear, we are still at a 0%, correct? 0% tax increase?
It is correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. Nope, I'll make a motion to adopt the budget as is.
That's our second.
Okay.
Go call. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, no.
Uh, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody, for that. I'll do the research and let you know what what I come up with.
And Mary, thanks to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary, really appreciate it.
No problem. Oh, I have one item if we can circle back.
Yes.
Mayor Plummer was with regard to the attorney fees.
Yes.
That are still outstanding, that I do need to get paid for this year end budget.
So I got approvals tonight. So I got approvals on the PZBA ones and on and I sent to you guys the other day, the HPB ones. So we should have everything to be able to approve everything as of last week. I don't know anything that came in between now and then. So do you want all those numbers, Mary?
Yes, I do need the numbers because for what I put through on the abstract was all the numbers for Jeff Turner's firm that you had forwarded to me. There was one for 19,225, 37, 6250, 1155, 742, and 2062.
Mary, why don't I, why don't I give you the numbers that are that I am giving to the trustees to to review? Okay, ready? ORB 58837?
588, say that again, 58837. Okay, that was, that went through as paid on the abstract.
Okay, ORB 59279?
Paid on the abstract.
Okay, ORB 59280?
Paid on the abstract.
ORB 59407?
Paid on the abstract.
Okay, I got a couple more. Zoglin 10.
Did you have the other one, 59278 for the municipal one for 19,000? I believe you sent me a separate one as well, which was paid on, paid on the abstract.
So I have ORB 58907?
Say that again, 59407?
Uh, 58907?
58907. 589? I'm not seeing 5890, 58907?
Did we pay it?
Is it for 3, is it for $313?
Um, look.
If if it was for 313, it was paid the abstract prior.
Yeah, that's the 31350. So the only other ones that I have approval on are Zoglin invoices.
Okay, so Zoglin invoices, the four that you have on your sheet right now, 958, 10, 1052, 1115, 1140?
I have 958.
1052 is a zero for correct.
I have 958, which is also 1006. So I don't understand that. But 958 definitely, 1115.
Yeah.
And 1140. Yeah, so those three Zoglins.
Yeah, one of them had to be rewritten. So that's probably where the duplicate number is. Okay, so that clears up all of Zoglins. Just to go back to Jeff's, there's two that have been left behind, 59782 for $280.50 and 59736 for $330. Is there a possibility of those being paid tonight?
All right, I don't have approval on them from the board chairs tonight.
The general labor one is one from the Board of Trustees.
I haven't reviewed it yet.
Okay, and then Hudson Ross?
Hudson Ross, they haven't responded. So I don't know what to do, guys. So now I've sent a couple emails, placed a phone call. So I'm asking maybe somebody else to follow up because they haven't responded.
And I'll follow up.
Okay, you'll follow up?
Yeah, yeah, happy to do it, sure.
All right, thanks. I'll give you a call and and tell you what it was that we were looking for on that. It was a slight change that we needed to the invoice that they sent.
Okay.
Okay, I just would like to get these cleared up prior to 531. So whatever the last May meeting is, it would have to be cleared up by then. So we don't carry it forward as an accounts payable. And it gives us a clear picture of where we actually spent our dollars in law on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay.
Um, were we looking to pay these invoices for Zoglin? If so, we need a motion.
Thank you, Dorothy.
I'll make a motion to pay the approved invoices.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trust, uh, trustee Lightgib?
I wasn't a member of the board during this time, so I'll abstain.
Okay, um, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Well, I guess I should abstain as well.
Okay, motion passes.
Yep.
Wait, then we have a problem with that motion? Because at least you seconded it.
That's right, that's right.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Thanks, Renee.
Okay, we'll call a quick roll call on that, just to make sure we're correct.
Yeah.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lightgib and Mayor Plummer will abstain. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, on to the organizational meeting. So as mayor, I'm going to be making the following appointments. I appoint trustee Renee Stetser as deputy mayor for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. I also make a motion to appoint Dorothea Chicorelli as village clerk for a four-year term ending in 2026. Is there a second?
I'll second it, trustee Keating.
Okay, roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you. I make a motion to appoint Marina Pacheco Walker as deputy clerk for a one-year term ending in 2022. Do I have a second?
Lampier, second.
Okay, roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
And I just want you all to know Marina's last name now is Pacheco Walker because she got married last week.
Oh, congratulations, yay!
In Hawaii.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh.
Why weren't we all invited?
I know.
I'm in quarantine for two weeks or whatever.
Yeah, we missed that one. Okay, moving along, I make a motion to appoint Brooklyn Thomas as deputy treasurer for a one-year term ending in 2022. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, trustee Keating.
Okay, roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes, Marina says thank you as well.
Okay, moving on to appointments for specialized services. I make a motion to appoint Mengi Metzger Bar and Company CPA PC for a one-year term ending in 2022. Is there a second?
Do we have to do these one at a time?
Yes, we do.
We do, bummer.
Yeah.
That's why I said, take your vitamins.
I will second that.
Renee, I, do you want to second all of them and then we, so we can be quick?
Oh, okay. Or have Lily do it. I don't want to speak every time. All right.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye. I make a mo. Oh, sorry. I make a motion to appoint Scott Harder as village engineer for a one-year term ending in 2022. Is there a second?
Second, Stetser.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint Steve Robson as village assessor for a one-year term ending in 2022. Do I have a second?
Stetser, second.
Trust, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye. I make a motion to appoint Gary Wilkins as village insurance agent for a one-year term ending in 2022. Is there a second?
Stetser, second.
Trust, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye. I make a mo. All right, I make a motion to appoint Bernard P. Donigan Incorporated as financial advisors for a one-year term ending in 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint McCord Landscaping as a village landscape architect for a one-year term ending in 2022. Is there a second?
Stetser, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint Maria Hewitt as the historic preservation consultant for a one-year term ending in 2022. Do I have a second?
I have, I second, but I also have a question about this because she's also an alternate on the board. And we're also appointing her as a one-year consultant. Is there, is that a normal thing we do?
I spoke to Jeff on this. She is only an alternate related to 75 Monroe Avenue manners. And this is an appointment for consultant for non-75 Monroe Avenue manners. So they are separated issues.
Like she would do a site visit perhaps at the board's request and write something up. It wouldn't be related necessarily to 75 Monroe Hall.
Okay. Just wanted to, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I think I, I can't remember if I seconded and then asked a question. So now I second.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint Q-Tech Engineering for site lighting review for the PZBA for a one-year term ending in 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye. Renee, do you want me to take over?
I'm ready to hand off my second, you knew.
Okay, I'll do the seconding from here on.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint Pebble Stream for landscape architectural consulting for the PZBA for a one-year term ending in 2022. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Dorothy, can you, can you scroll down a smidge so we can follow along?
Oh, sorry. I didn't know. Erailed there.
Well, so the public has probably left, but just in case.
Or they're napping.
They're still hanging in, I'm shocked.
It's, it's a tough group, okay. Legal representation, I make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Turner as the village board attorney at a rate set per the his retainer agreement for a one-year term ending in 2022.
Keating, second.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Turner as the historic preservation board attorney at a set, at a rate set per retainer agreement for a one-year term ending in 2022. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.[1768.59]
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint as planning board and zoning of Board of Appeals attorney Mindy L. Zoglin, Esquire of the Zoglin Group, at a rate set per retainer agreement for a one-year term ending in twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint Timothy R. McGill as municipal bond attorney for a one-year term ending in twenty twenty-two. Is there a second? Did we lose Dan?
Second.
Renee. Okay, trustee Keating?
Your attack team.
Sorry, guys, the mute button got stuck. Uh, Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Sure, Dan. Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, I make a motion to appoint Hobson Ross as special counsel for seventy-five Monroe Avenue at a rate set per retainer agreement for a one-year term ending in twenty twenty-two.
Keating, second, I guess.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, just as a, as a spelling point, uh, counsel should be spelled, um, ending in S E L. For special counsel.
It is.
Oh, on my copy, I have it. Oh, you must have corrected it then. I have the older copy.
Okay.
Well done.
Correct.
Okay, moving along. I make a motion, uh, to appoint Christian Cassini as the village labor attorney at a rate of a hundred and sixty-five dollars per hour for a one-year term ending in twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Turning to the historic preservation board, I make a motion to appoint Lisa Cove as chairman to the historic preservation board for a one-year term ending in twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Turning to the planning board and zoning board of appeals, uh, oh, can you scroll up, please, again, for everybody?
I'm sorry, I get-
No, that's, I get it. I mean, we're in the middle of it all here. Um, I make a motion to appoint Justin Bleestra as chairman to the planning board and zoning board of appeals for a one-year term ending in twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second?
Keating, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee, uh, Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Oh, Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to appoint Joanne Shannon as planning board and zoning board of appeals member for a five-year term ending in twenty twenty-six. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Alright, let me roll.
Yep, scroll, please. Thank you.
Okay.
These, we can all do at once, right?
Yep.
I believe it's called a one lump sum.
There you go.
Okay, um, this is regarding wage compensation, uh, for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. I make a motion to approve the wage compensation schedule for the coming year. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
The whole staff thanks you, and I thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, moving to liaison, if you could scroll, scroll up, please. Uh, moving to liaison positions for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two, um, I make a motion to approve the liaison positions for this coming year.
Uh, Keating, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Okay, real quick, I just want to correct some things on the tax rate and sewer rents. Um, we didn't have the figures prior to this, so the tax rate will be the four seventy-two, four dollars and seventy-two cents per thousand. The sewer rent will be a base rate of twenty-nine sixty-seven. The additional gallons will be three thirty-eight per thousand, and Wood Creek would be six dollars and seventy-eight cents, and then you can do it all at one time.
Uh, okay, um, I make a motion to approve the tax rate and sewer rate for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trust, trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye. Can you scroll up again for folks, please?
Yep, oh, give me two jobs and I can't do either.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, do we, we have to read through the times for the official meetings? Do, should we do that or make the motion to approve it all?
You can just make a motion to approve it all if you have no changes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the official meetings for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Guys, I have to drop off for a couple minutes. There's a family thing. We'll be right back. I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Uh, regarding hiring process and employee training, I make a motion to approve the hiring process and employee training for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Lampier, second.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the official newspaper and the bank for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Lampier, second.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the bond and check signatures for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Lampier, second.
Um, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the hours of operation and the floating holiday for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two.
Keating, second.
Lampier, aye.
Thick Lily gotcha. Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Okay.
Thank you for scrolling.
No problem.
Uh, there was a-
The fee schedule.
Dan, Dan, you had a question on, on something? Was that-
No, no.
Bro, okay, alrighty. Um, I make a motion to approve the fee schedule for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Lightgeb, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Hold on, I'm rolling, rolling. Okay, parking fee schedule?
Hang on, whoops, I'm on the wrong page. I'm, I make a motion to approve, uh, the parking ticket schedule for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two.
Keating, second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?[1659.98]